Please settle. They're about to start. Okay, 99th regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Invocation by Honorable Counselor Agas Juan, followed by the singing Lupang Hinirang and the Kagayan di Oro March. Please rise.
May I request, excuse me, may I request everyone to please rise and be aware that we are in the Holy Presence of God. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord Jesus, God of Gods, King of Kings, Lord of Lords, we are nothing without you. So today, we humbly ask for your presence, your wisdom, your power, your strength, that we may be effective and efficient in our dealings with the people. Grant us humility, gentleness, and calmness. And bless everyone in this session, especially our Presiding Officer, our Vice Mayor, and each and every member of this council. We thank you, Lord, and in Jesus's name, amen.
Okay.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, helas ang siratanan, palam ng puso sa nitikoy buhay. Lupang hinirang, kuyatan ang mahitin, saman't lupoing, ikapasi silil. Sanagadap, tutok sa simoyat, sananit, kau-pa-rao, ayunadamp, tulakawin, sa pagkayang ni damalar. Ang isdakdak, huatawat, kuyatan, kuyanat, initi, ang pituin, akarot, ya, kaidan, ang haydi, matitinin. Lupan na paraw, ngakwar, habit, patikda, kue, ngabit, sa bibito. Ang inigaya, napak, kayo ngabi, ang pamakay, ngang, kahil, sayo. Happy Monday, honor our blood, our beloved city. Thy mountains, speakers, saints, and sisters, thy people, them, tents, and happy. Happy Monday, honor our blood, our beloved city. Dear singing praises, in our hearts, forever to live to live. Blood and way to the land of promise, ring and a walk of heart they say. His devotion, Lord, will the cross to serve you forever free. The walking, real place of life, glory, where the mountain is. Our deep peoples, who's at last we are, there is grace for you, and my heart. Happy, for the grace of God, our beloved city. Loving me, my beloved, dear boy, brother, apply to flatter thee. Happy, for the grace of God, our beloved city. So forever, and forever, for thy glory, the glory be.
Please be seated. Mrs. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable City Vice Mayor Joselyn B. Rodriguez, Presiding Officer. For the First District Councillors, Honorable Agapito Eriberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J. R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, indisposed, Honorable George Is Goking, Honorable Jose P. S. Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern A. Esparcia. For the Second District Councillors, Honorable Ivuna Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lores Esgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Q. Nakaya, indisposed, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba, on birthday leave, Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay president, Honorable Kenneth John Di Sakala, City Escape Federation President, and Honorable Dato Roberto P. Kabaring, IPMR. There is quorum, Madam Presiding Officer.
Quorum is certified. Good afternoon, Councillors, good afternoon, friends from the media, good afternoons, our visitors who are here right now, those who are watching on live, uh, watching us right now, live. And of course, our sincere condolences again to Counselor George Goking. Nakadungo ko na'y birthday, dery? Huh? Ah, Suzette, and... Isip piyat ko. Kanu sa'yo birthday, Counselor? Idungan na lang ako with Suzette, okay? Monday. Walay naka-keep track na ako. Anyway, Suzette is also having birthday today, so Monday ta, anduha, okay? But we will sing the birthday song now, delay map postpone, ang cake lang map postpone. But the birthday song should be... Ano man? Ayaw, lahi ginangimo. Lahi na imo karoon. So who's going to lead the song? Ikaw, Counselor Aga. Okay, na. Okay, sige. Please rise. Pangan tatadaan ka man Suzette.
Everyone, please rise. Sige. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you, bastard. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Counselor Ian, more power. God bless you and your family.
Okay. So your birthday is when, Counselor Ian? Nine. So last week? Right? Last week, diba? Okay, sige. Anyway, uh... Let us proceed. Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. Wala magod akong staff karoon, Counselor Ian. Wala po da'kong staff na incharge, anak. Ma'ong nak. Oh, anyway.
Thank you very much, uh, to our generous and energetic Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Joselyn Bebo Rodriguez, members of the City Council, our guests who are with us this afternoon, the gallery, people of Kagayan di Oro. Mayong hapon satanan. Happy birthday, Counselor Ian. And of course, Suzette. Uh, Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on October 7, 2024?
Twenty second. Objection? I hear none motion is by Karit.
Move to approve the said minutes.
Second. Objection? I hear none motion is by Karit.
On the special report, uh, uh, Counselor Gurli. Okay. Uh, only one is, uh, uh, decide to render a special report and Counselor Gurli Balaba.
Okay, okay.
It's about the Bulwa pottery concern.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor, Majority Floor Leader. Yes, you have the floor. You have beautiful, uh, what you call this, Filipinoana. You have beautiful dress, the Filipinoana.
Thank you, our Vice Mayor, no? Um, this is, uh, in, uh...
Homemade it?
Ano lang, darila sa Kagayan.
Okay.
Uh, in support of our celebration, no, observance of our NCIP.
Ah, okay, okay.
NCIP Month.
Yes, yes.
So I'm trying to, uh, signify or at least, um, embody the observance of NCIP Month. I hope you appreciate that, our Counselor, um...
Roberto Kabaring?
Yes. Dato Kabaring. So anyways, good afternoon, Madam Chair. Um, Vice Mayor Joselyn Bebo Rodriguez, to my colleagues, to all our staff and guests in the gallery, and those who are watching us via social media platforms. I am here to ask this august body to see the importance of preserving our pottery making in Barangay Bulwa and realize that pottery is more than just a business. It is an art and a craft that reflects our culture and heritage. This pottery making was said to have started 20 years ago, um, if I am not mistaken, based on my research on, on the history of pottery making in Bulwa by two master potters from Germany who married Filipinas. Both opened their potteries, um, two best friends who eventually became, according to reports, enemies. And according to these reports, they came with their German knowledge and insights and started importing their own clay from Germany and lecturing local potters in German style. They exploited, but this is the, uh, the catch. They exploited cheap labor of our Kagayanon workers in order to be able to export cheaply abroad for their manufacturing companies and sell there. Wala naman hinuon ikaroon. Um, wag na, naundang na ni siya orgi, baligyan na ni ma'ong, um, factory. Pero taliwala ni ini, mapasalamatong ihapon kita sa duha ka mga langyao nga maui nagsugod o nakadiskover sa dakong oportunidad nga mahatag sa atong mga kaigsuunan, um, kining pottery business. Pero gusto nato nga mahimo pa kining mas, mahinungdanon aron sa pag-ila sa atong dakbaan, isip uso sa mga pottery capital sa nasud. The cultural mapping, um, this is a, um, grab from, uh, Google. The cultural mapping report summarizes the pottery tradition in Barangay Bulwa, Kagayan di Oro City. Pottery, known locally as banga, represents the iconic craft and economic activity of the community. It provides jobs and income for our residents. The giant clay jar landmark called banga in the main intersection symbolizes their pottery heritage. While the tradition faces challenges like lack of marketing and technology, opportunities exist to promote cultural tourism and innovation to sustain the legacy of pottery making in Bulwa. Proper maintenance and conservation efforts are needed to preserve their local treasure. With this, Madam Chair, I am proposing an ordinance together with our Chairperson of the Committee on Tourism, Counselor J. Pasqual, to preserve this pottery making in Bulwa and help sustain it by first, the need to equip our potters the knowledge, since they already have the skills, and equipped with globally competitive techniques so they can produce equally globally competitive products. I am dreaming of seeing shops along the Bulwa Highway which displays products that are not only aesthetically valuable, but a product that identifies the heritage and culture of Kagayan di Oro. As we campaign to support local products, we must also campaign for the welfare and technique advancement of the potters behind these paso and behind these banga. That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you so much and good afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Counselor J. Pasqual, you have the floor.
Afternoon, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Madam Chair, um, we are already supporting the pottery industry and, uh, in fact, ang ato ang mga ginapanghatag sa atong mga sister cities, gahatag tagatong murag leaf nga pottery, and then atong ginapanghatag sa mga mayors, na mga Uban Councillors nga maganidini, we also give them katomurag ka ng coffee mug nga Kagayan di Oro. And, uh, of course, we, we explain to them na not every piece is the same. So laylahigod siya ang kuwan, although same ang design, but different ang yahang shape, ogang yahang kuwan, Madam Chair. So, um, but yes, we would really want to support this, Madam Chair. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor J. Pasqual. Yes, Counselor Attorney Joe Abu.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Uh, I'd like to support also the said, uh, manifestation of the good Counselor, uh, Balaba. Because actually, ang kanang pottery sa Bulwa, nasugod ginasi ang ginagamit nila is kining, ang yuta, ang klase sa yuta yun. Munang ginagamit nila nga murag. Kung ako masayop katong pulag yun, bat karoon medyo rir, nagigina siya pangitaong sa Bulwa. But naagi pottery, pottery nga murag factory ni gida sa Barangay Bulwa before para po sa murao kining, uh, itodlo po sa mga tau po para pamaagi po nga panginabuha, panginabuhian nila lugar bali. So bat karoon, as far as I know, wala namang guna siya nga, nga murag factory or murag school on how to make a pot or ka na mga banga or kaang. So I'd like to support this measure proposed by, uh, Counselor Gurli Balaba.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Attorney Abu. Yeah, may I ask Counselor Gurli if this group, are they, ano, they, are they registered? Are they a group as cooperative or they are individually, uh, promoting their product?
Um, yes, Madam Chair, know that this is what we are trying to do with this, um, ordinance that, uh, all potters in Bulwa will be registered and, uh, fully monitored by the city. So that, uh, every now and then, we will conduct seminars, workshops, and then invite, um, prospective investors and even prospective, um, mga, um, lecturers, artists, lecturers from abroad and even from other parts of the country para mag, uh, mag, mag, uh, preserve nato, no, preserve ang kining, uh, pottery making.
Yeah, give emphasis on this group as, as a group, no? So we can provide them with livelihood from the national, from the congressman, from the mayor. So, uh, so that, uh, they will be supported financially on their project also. Yes, thank you. Uh, Counselor Evi Imano, you have the floor.
Thank you so, uh, thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Actually, Madam Chair, that was a very good suggestion from the good Counselor, lovely Counselor Mam Balaba. But actually, Madam Chair, kanang sa Bulwa, uh, kami, no, kami sa kumagulang, hilig manimo ato dito, kaya guapo yun ilang products. But ang ilang main problem is kulang na ang ga...
Gahimo.
...ang yahang artist, ba kulang na ang kanang gahimo, kaya handmade mang yun siya. Actually, nanasilay program every Sunday nga buha ko masayop, ang price is 2.5 from 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM, mutodlo sila. Ang ilang, ang inyo ding buhaton, inyong lutuon, inyong madalas inyong house, kaya ginalutuk man na ang clay after nimo siya i-mold. But, uh, I think the main problem, Madam Chair, is, as, uh, Counselor Balaba said, it is really for preservation purposes. Kaya ganey, lisod naman pangitaon ng mga rare nga kuloon. Kuloon ang tawag, and actually, mga, mga pots made of clay nga in Visaya is actually kuloon nga. Uh, in terms of, I think culinary sa pagkaon, in terms of agriculture gamit, kaayon ni siya. Kaya sa old, sa atong history before, ang usually galutuan po sa Kagayanon is kuloon. Kung kabantay mo, diba, halos ato nga sabaw. It preserves also the food, the flavor. So if the good Counselor would allow, delay lang siguro to sa tourism, basin pwede nato siya i-appel. Kaya na suggest naman siya nga, basin pwede siya himuon o livelihood in terms of, or himuon baka siya o cooperative or, or baka in other ways, basin pwede, aside sa, uh, sa tourism, basin pwede nato siya isulod appeal sa trade and commerce siguro? If possible, for...
Yeah, but then they have to form as a group first, before they can be provided with a financial assistance with different agencies. Kung individually, so...
I know, but, yeah, Madam Chair, agreed.
So that is precisely why I mentioned a while ago.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, sayang manggot, grupo lang sila.
Skill. Kaya actually, one of the problem of Kagayan di Oro is the skills of our old Philippine, old Kagayanon. Nakawala na siya, kaya ang atong batano, delay na sila, as interested as skilled, ang atong mga karaan nga tao, atong mga batano natin kinalan, i-enhance, i... Basin pwede ko kabalo, how we incorporate it sa atong future generation, or atong kabatanunan karoon, so as to... Para delay mawala ang atong inandan sa Kagayan.
Yes, you know, but in fact, uh, this, ano, this kuloon, tawag kuloon, I wanted it hand painted.
They can actually, Madam Chair...
Yeah, and they were able to produce me hand painted, pero katagipugosran ako. So, kung naay daghan variety o daghan maka-hand paint, guapo yung kaayon. In fact, I bought some and then ako ipa-hand paint, pero mula ginna, they have to look for somebody to do the hand painting. That will already, uh, what you call this, i-enhance pagid nila. Ang ilang forma plus the hand painted design, guapo na yung kaayon.
And also, Madam Chair, ang ato ang products of Bulwa actually. Kung matu ka sa yahang store, kulang perme ka, ang ilang products, perme gina, gina-export, actually. Or export siya, so kung ato siyang ma-enhance here, all the more we can go, not just, we can go beyond the borders, ba? We can break the limits of just selling in Kagayan di Oro, misami-sorianta. So I think that's a very good idea, Madam Chair. So once again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me know, pag mapurmanan sila, I can help them, okay? From the national budget. Yes, Counselor Bernice Esparcia.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. Mayong hapon. Sa tuntanan, mayong hapon. Uh, I'm so happy nga nahimo ni special report ni Counselor Gurli Balaba regarding aning banga nato sa Bulwa. Uh, though I'm not from Bulwa, but akong trabaho sa una sa ABSB, and more than 20 years po ko dya sa Bulwa, and permitiko saksi nga si Gimyokshut balik-balik dya. Uh, kanilang akong pangutan na Madam Presiding Officer, sa kadugay nga panahon. O sa daygod, wala patay sokad ordinance sa day about ano nga ato, nanggiila ang banga dya sa Bulwa for the longest time. Because, uh, I think, uh, usas akong proposed ordinance was the obop, the, the one, Barangay one, one product, which is, ang, ang purpose na ato is, mula ginna, sa Bulwa, ang banga gali sa Lumbia ang kasui. Uh, taba, kasui, Madam Presiding Officer. So that's why I'm asking dya nga, sa kadugay na tong panahon, ug dugay na dya ano kuwan, wala gidetas sokad, naingana nga, na-preserve nato ng banga, kaya dapat galing, ang Bulwa, ang pinakamain dapat na, mahimo silang pot festival dya or banga festival dya, kung both, hono na, Madam Presiding Officer. But, like, again, I just remembered my, my proposed ordinance nga one, Barangay one product, dwa, lang ko nakahiring ato, Madam Presiding Officer. That's why I'm just asking, manifesting kung kuwan, then confirmed na, sir, uh, towards, wala pag yun sokad dya tanak, na for the longest time nato dya wala tanaka kuwan about ano kuwan. Then I support, Madam Presiding Officer, on that nga i-preserve yun nato kay kuwan nga, idiyag yun ilado ang Bulwaan ng yahang produkto. Tagan salamat.
Thank you. Actually, uh, the pot ma, pot making is one of the creative domain, no? Partner siya sa creative industry, which is part of the domain, meaning domain magkalain-lain, uh, design, visual, filmmaking, so kani is one. I hope that we can help with the DTI, Department of Trade and Industry, that they will be, uh, also inviting them. Kaya sige-sige namang inseminar aning, uh, atong creative industry, so that nga matabangan nato sila, so that ang ilang livelihood, mapa, atong mapaligon, ogang ilang, uh, what you call this, the potential that they are having. Yes, Counselor George Goking?
Uh, mayong hapon, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, derang salamat sa imong bulak, ogang kong rufus.
Welcome.
Ogal sa council.
Wako kabisita, sorry, dya kaayon, kaya nalubong naman dayon.
Oo. Three days naman yun tuang, mulungkong, salamat sa internan, sa, the prayers. Uh, kining sa kuwan sa Bulwa, bitaw, Madam Chair, and to all my colleagues. We are in the process of coming up with an ordinance sa MSME. Micro, small, medium enterprises, ang micro, 3 million up ang ihatag sa DTI, uh, Department of Trade and Industry, the OST. Ang small is around 10 million above, nga matabangan nila. Sa ilang funding, ogang medium is 100 million up. So kung pwede yun ta, Madam Chair, sa kamulupag process nato sa atong, um, MSME ordinance, uh, uh, this proposal of our, oh, my colleague, uh, Counselor Gurli be incorporated to the ordinance. Tagan salamat, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor George Goking. Yes. Counselor, Majority Floor dery? Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Uh, okay, Madam Chair, agi, aduk tiyaling buhaton na ni, ato ni refer sa turwa committee. So that we could have the concrete, uh, text of the ordinance. And then, uh, suggestion lang, let's invite during the committee hearing, joint committee hearing, invite yun nato ang ilang...
Yes.
...ang grupo, para madunggan nato unsi ang mga problema po.
And probably, because I do public consultations, so that I will know how to go about this, we will have a public consultation on this, uh, group, para matodluan ato kunsaon.
Yes, uh, para nga makik, maklaro, makita nato asa depit ang problema.
Yes.
Asa kita mutapang depit. So prefer to the three committees, uh, Committee on Tourism, Committee on Cooperative, perhaps it should be included, Committee on, uh, sipa.
Trade and Industry.
Uh, Trade and Industry. That would be, I think, three committees, like the Quad Committee. Bitaw, uh, that is my suggestion.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay, thank you very much. So let us proceed. Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Okay, so with that, uh, we push it to our business relate. Uh, item one, two, three, four, Madam Chair, third please.
For omnibus approval, items one, two, three, and four. Item one is proposed resolution number 2024-866, returning to Barangay Council of Barangay Balulang, the city's ordinance number 2024-2 series of 2024, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,784,029 pesos and 85 cents tabos. Item two is proposed resolution number 2024-867, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number 20, the city's ordinance number one, thus 2024, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,154,393 pesos. Item three is proposed resolution number 2024-867, returning to the Barangay Council of Barangay number 20, the city's ordinance number one, thus 2024, Item three is proposed resolution number twenty twenty four dash eight six eight. Returning to barangay council of barangay number thirty, deceased its ordinance number twenty twenty four dash one, series of twenty twenty four. Cover its annual budget for calendar year twenty twenty four with an estimated income of three million eight hundred forty thousand two hundred nine pesos. Item number four is proposed resolution number twenty twenty four dash eight six nine. Returning to barangay council of barangay Tumpagun, deceased its ordinance number one, series of twenty twenty four. Cover its annual budget for calendar year twenty twenty four with an estimated income of five million seventy-one thousand five hundred forty-nine pesos. With the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety.
Madam Chair, may I request councillor Alam Lim be given the floor?
Councillor Alam Lim, you are recognized?
Madam Chair, may hapon, may hapon sa tanan. Everything is in order, I move for the approval, proposed resolution number two zero two four dash eight six six. Proposed resolution number two zero two four dot eight six seven. Purpose resolution number two zero two four dot eight six eight. Purpose resolution number two zero two four dash eight six nine.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item five, proposed solution number twenty twenty four eight seventy. Adapting the order of the committee on ethics and blue ribbon on barangay case number twenty twenty three dash fourteen. Entitled, Miss Chucky Ibalie Akaso, complainant against Honorable- Chuki? Ah, Chuch, Chuchi, yes, yes. I thought it's Akay, it's, ah sorry, Chuchi. Honong barangay, ah Honorable, ah Polito Di Ogzimer. Honorable Esperino Bakunga, Honorable Anthony B. Bustamante, Honorable Rowena- Rai Im Mediana, all of barangay La Pasan respondents for violation of section three, paragraph E. And G of Republic Act number three zero one nine, dishonesty, grim misconduct, conduct and becoming of a public officer. Abuse of authority, and Republic Act seventy-one sixty of the local government code dismissing deceased case for lack of merit. May I request councillor Roger, Chair Abada, be recognized?
Councillor Roger Abada, you recognize?
Good afternoon, ah the Presiding Officer, my colleagues in the twenty six council, and all are listening and watching us. I move that the proposed resolution number twenty twenty four dash eight seventy will be approved.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item six, proposed resolution number twenty twenty four eight seven one. Inter- interposing objection to the transport franchise operation of the Joyride Super App. In the city of Kagayandoro, which offers on demand services in ride-hailing, delivery. Food and shopping and payments as applied for by its president, Mister Neil Sherwin Yu. Subject to its compliance of existing laws, rules and regulations pertaining to- May I request councillor, Namasi? Shakala.
Can it's Shakala, you recognize?
Ah move for the approval of the proposed resolution number twenty twenty four dash eight seven one, thank you.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item seven, third please. Item seven is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine four. Prescribing and or adapting the qualification standards for appointment to the herein specified vacant positions in the respective plantilia. Of the herein mentioned offices of the city government of Kagayandoro. Pursuant to civil service commission memorandum circular number six series of twenty twenty three. Which amends section thirty-four of the twenty seventeen omnibus rules on appointments and other human resource actions. To it, one is city government department head two, under the city economic development and investment promotions office. Item number twelve is salary grade twenty-six. Number two is city government assistant department head two, assistant chief of hospital under item number two, salary grade twenty-four of the GR Borja General Hospital. And number three is city government assistant department head two, assistant city building official under item number two, salary grade twenty-four. Under the office of the city building officials. The qualifications are listed in the agenda, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, may I request councillor Ian Magaya be recognized?
Wala siya.
Ah, okay. Councillor, she said, ah, wala ka po?
Birthday.
Siya ba? Councillor, ah Malburn Sparsha, she recognize me?
Councillor Malburn Sparsha, you recognize?
Move for the approval of the proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine four.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item eight, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four five nine five, appropriating the sum of two hundred fifteen thousand three hundred twenty-three pesos. For and forty-four cent tabos from the item none office, general public services sector, terminal leave benefits, monetization of earned leave. Airmark for Mister Richard Antonio A. Guzman, former nurse of the office of the city health- of the city health officer in the twenty twenty four annual budget to be made available for the payment of terminal leave pay of Mister Divino Soldivilla. Former barangay health aide, health aide of the state office retired from public service effective December five, twenty twenty three. May I request councillor Gurli Balaba be recognized?
Councillor Gurli Balaba, you recognize?
Eyes on the board. Madam Chair, I'm not listening. Um, I propose, ah for the approval, I move, rather, for the approval of proposed ordinance number- twenty twenty four dash five nine five.
Any second?
Second.
Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item nine, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four five nine six, authorizing the city mayor Rolando A. Uy. Representing the city government Kagayandoro to sign the deed of donation executed by the Department of Health. Center for, Center for Health Development, Northern Mindanao D O H, C H D N M. Donor represented by its director, four, Solpicio Henry M. Ligaspi Junior. MD covering one unit land ambulance, including equipment amounting to two point five million under terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I request councillor Maria Lourdes Gane be recognized?
Councillor Lourdes Gane, you recognize?
May hapon na, may hapon ka na tong tanan. Move for the approval of proposed ordinance number two zero two four dash five nine six.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item ten, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four five nine seven, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy. Representing the city government of Kagayandoro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Commission on Human Rights. Represented by its regional director, attorney Jean Abrina. Covering the parties collaboration in the establishment, development, strengthening and continuous operationalization of Center for Human Rights. Human rights education through the city college Kagayandoro, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. My request, councillor Aimi Moreno, be recognized?
Councillor Aimi Moreno, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair, mayong hapon. I move for for the approval of the proposed ordinance number two zero two four dash five nine six.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
For inclusion, Madam Chair, item eleven, A, B, C, D, E, F, A, F, G. Ah twelve, A, B, Naksono Dangif, third. Ah twelve A, B, and item, ah item thirteen, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Ah, ah plus, ah.
Yes, councillor Roger Abada?
I am ah proposing this body to include, for the inclusion of ah, ah, the- ah congratulating and commending engineer Armin Quenka or Quenro. Was received Presidential Income Award twenty twenty four, equally highest award received by our presiding-
Civil Service, yeah, commission.
Presiding officer.
Yeah, okay. Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
First, omnibus at twenty third. Kining eight, P, P, G.
For omnibus approval, items eleven A to G. Item eleven A is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine eight. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing the city government of Kagayandoro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the one and all Technical School Incorporated, represented by school president, Miss Maria Joseline Inco. For item eleven B is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine nine. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Amhara Technical Training Institute Incorporated, represented by its president, Miss Mari Lope Rabe. For eleven C, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six hundred. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Asian Business Cable Two Cooperative Incorporated, Incorporated, represented by its chairman and C E O. Doctor Soak Anthony Maria Del Rosario. For eleven D is proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six oh one. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Four J and E Technical School Incorporated, represented by its president, Mister James E. Inigo. For eleven E, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero two. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Saint Joseph Technological Institute and Assessment Center Incorporated, represented by its president, engineer Eduardo Quijano. Eleven F, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero three. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Vineyard International Polytechnic College Incorporated, represented by its president, Mister Christian Anton P. Padilla. And eleven G, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero four. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Zaidi Yuau Yuau Technical School and Assessment Center Incorporated. Represented by its school president, Mister Robin Louis B. Yuau. All covering the collaboration of the parties in the implementation of the city's relevant industry skills for employment rise scholarship program. Under the terms and conditions stipulated therein.
Well, I'm sure may I request that councillor G. Roa Pascal be recognized?
Councillor G. Roa Pascal, you recognize?
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Ah move to approve, ah proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine eight. Ordina- ah proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash five nine nine. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero zero. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero one. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six oh two. Proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six oh three. And proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six oh four.
Any second?
Second.
Objection? Yes, question? Ah councillor Gurli Balaba, you recognize?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask if um all these schools, technical schools are here, from here, in Kagayandoro? Yeah, ah, the candidate, ah, technical schools, okay. Thank you.
Anyway, ah, okay.
The educational schools, private.
Tesla, most of them are Tesla.
Yes.
Yeah.
All around the city.
Accredited.
Accredited.
Yeah, Tesla. Anyway, ah any second?
Second.
Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item, ah, twelve, move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection. Ah, okay, councillor Roger Abada, you have the floor?
Ah, item twelve A and B, just a change of the title of-
Ah, we are still not there. Eyes on the board again.
I don't, I don't, ah, sorry, sorry, just reserve break.
Emojiko pakataon good councillor Roger, huh? Anyway, ah, sige, let's proceed councillor Majority Floor.
When I get a wagligi, ah, senior sentence? Mariana me.
Senior sentence. Anyway, proceed.
So item twelve, Madam Chair, third please, ah, pasahas agad yud, twelve A and B.
For omnibus approval, item twelve A and B. Item twelve A, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six zero five. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing the city government Kagayandoro. To enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Capital University. Represented by its university president, attorney Casimero B. Juarez Junior. And the Department of Education Division of Kagayandoro, represented by its schools division superintendent, Mister Roy Angelo I. Gasso, P. H. D. Ceso five, covering the partnership of the parties in the implementation of the Alternative Learning System Night School Program, ALS N S P. Under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. Item twelve B, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four dash six hundred six. Authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement. With the Finma Kagayandoro College, Finma C O C. Represented by its chief operations officer, Mister Mark C. Macavinta. And the Department of Education Division of Kagayandoro, represented by its schools division superintendent, Doctor Roy Angelo I. Gasso, Ceso five. Covering the partnership of the parties in the implementation of the Alternative Learning System Night School Program. Under the terms and conditions stipulated therein.
Ah, Madam Chair, may I request councillor George Go King be recognized?
Councillor George Go King, you recognize? Eyes on the board again.
Murakay ten A, bataba?
A and B?
B.
A and B?
A and B, twelve.
Yeah, proposed ah ordinance, ah, A, number twenty twenty four dash six oh five. And proposed ordinance, ah, number twenty twenty four dash six oh six. I move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Discussion?
Question? Discussion, yes, councillor Roger Abada?
Ah, it, just a change of a title, Madam Chair and my colleagues. Instead of Mister, ah, Roy Angelo, doctor, because he's a P. H. D. So can we change it from Mister to ah doctor? This A and B?
Yeah, Doctor Roy.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Ah, let's give to she sir what we love to.
Okay, so animal, okay, so Doctor Roy Gasso, so any objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
Item thirteen, proposed ordinance number twenty twenty four six zero seven. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, representing the city government Kagayandoro. To enter into and sign the memorandum of understanding with the Department of Public Works and Highways Kagayandoro City Second District Engineering Office. Represented by its district engineer, Ian Paulo Lezonra. Covering the parties collaboration and in the implementation of C Y twenty twenty four, farm-to-market roads projects. Located in the barangays of Bugo, Indahag, Balubal, all of this city. With a total project fund of sixty-six million, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. As chairman of the committee on engineering, I move for its approval, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is by carried.
Move to approve on second final reading?
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is by carried.
There may be ano other matters to take, ah, na, sorry, ah. Item fourteen, proposed solution, number twenty twenty four eight seven two. Uh, item fourteen, proposed solution, number twenty twenty-four eight seven two congratulating highly commending engineer Quinka of Cleanro for being the recipient of Presidential Linkode Bayan Award twenty twenty-four, subject to further styling.
Any second, objection, I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none motion is hereby carried.
There being no other matters to take up, move for its adjournment, Madam Chair.
Session adjourned, God bless us all.